Okay, I'd like to start by introducing our principal at Taylor Prairie, Emily Foster, who has a team of teachers with her this evening. One of the things that we'll be doing over the next few months is the board will receive a report from each of our school teams to talk about some of the programming that's occurring in the schools, an opportunity for you as well to meet, again, you know, certainly the principals, but as well as some of their staff and some of the things that they're working on. So they're all with us this evening, so I'll turn it over to Emily.
All right, thank you, Dan. Hello, everybody. Thanks for having us. We're very excited to share the work that's been happening at Taylor Prairie. And like Dan said, School Board Appreciation Week was last week. We appreciate you all, and thank you so much for your dedication and hard work and commitment to our students and staff and community. I am really fortunate to have several amazing colleagues join me tonight, so I will have them introduce themselves. I'll call on each person. Allison, do you want to start?
Hi, I'm Allison Whitehead, teacher on special assignment at Taylor Prairie.
And May?
Hi, I'm May Fruling. I teach kindergarten at Taylor Prairie.
Karis?
Hi, I'm Karis Forsma, and I teach kindergarten music at Taylor Prairie.
Sarah?
Hi, I'm Sarah Steiny. I teach 4K at Taylor Prairie.
Elizabeth?
Hi, I'm Elizabeth Wodzinski, and I'm our library media specialist.
And Jessica?
Hello, I'm Jessica Wells. I teach 4K at Taylor Prairie.
All right, so Taylor Prairie is really fortunate to have 272 amazing, beautiful, joyful, creative, fun-loving, 4K and kindergarten students in our school this year. And we really wanted to kick off the year by defining ourselves as a 4K and kindergarten building. So you know that Taylor Prairie has always had a focus on serving primary age students, but this year especially, we are serving simply those 4K and kindergarten learners and giving them their very first school experience in the Cottage Grove community. So we kicked it off by creating a shared vision statement as a coordinator team, and we looked at our district vision and mission because we wanted to align with that as well as our non-negotiables. And we also thought about what we know and believe to be true about teaching and learning young children. And so this is the vision that we came up with, and I can read it. "Taylor Prairie School is a student-focused, play-based, inclusive environment where all stakeholders feel safe, welcomed, valued, connected, and supported, and embrace the belief that differences are not only welcomed, but celebrated, as students discover who they are while rising to high expectations." So we revisit this vision during every staff meeting, and staff as individuals have kind of pulled pieces that really resonate with them and their own why. And we believe that circling back to our why really often can help us stay motivated and grounded in what is truly important. And it also gives us kind of a common language, and we can hold ourselves and each other accountable to our why and to our school-wide vision. So what we're going to do tonight is each staff member here will take pieces of this vision and talk about how this vision is beginning to unfold and come to life within our school walls. So we'll kick it off with Elizabeth, and she's going to talk about the piece that focuses on student-focused, play-based learning. So I'll turn it over to Elizabeth.
Thank you. These pictures show our makerspace, and our makerspace is an active place where learners engage in hands-on learning and exploration. Sometimes classes have whole group activities related to a grade level standard, and other times our learners just have open-ended time for making and imaginative play. But every time they're in the space, our learners are cooperating, problem-solving, and playing.
For this part, this is our student-focused and play-based. In the article is "Play: A Privilege or a Right? And What's Our Responsibility?" On the role of play for equity in early childhood education, Mariana Sauto Manning wrote, "We must reject the framing of play as a privilege and must reclaim it as the right of every child. Play is a powerful medium for learning. In play, children enact the three F's of childhood: friendship, fantasy, and fairness. They learn about diversities, engage with familiar and unfamiliar materials, and share their own perspectives and experiences while considering others. In play, children are agents, they are doers. As Albert Einstein said, 'Play is the highest form of research.' Children collaborate and make discoveries through play. They author stories, they take risks, they engage in resistance, they learn."
The pictures that you're looking at show our 4K students learning and discovering through play. In 4K, our students become engineers and mathematicians and scientists and so much more. As 4K staff members, we know that our students can meet standards and district goals through facilitated play. And here you see our 4K students working together to design and create and engage in play in our classroom apple orchards. Throughout the process, students worked on hand strength and fine motor skills, literacy skills, language, and numerous math skills such as counting, number recognition, and subitizing. And most importantly, they gained experience with social emotional skills. So they worked together, they problem-solved and participated in role-playing. And this is a small sample of the supported play opportunities that our 4K students have each day they come, and we're so proud of the learning that they're doing.
Another way that we are focusing on students and the aspect of being play-based is through our kindergarten classes piloting a recess project, which is based off of the LINK Project, which was a project developed in Texas. The LINK Project supports the development of the whole child through bringing awareness to social, emotional health, and behavioral well-being as well as academics. There's a lot of research that indicates the importance of play for children. One article from Playworks indicated that play is critical for healthy child development, as it is a safe way for kids to experiment and practice building relationships and cooperating with others. Fostering safe, inclusive communities that allow for skill development are crucial for all learners. Play can be a tool for healing, as physical activity has many benefits on cognitive health, social health, and emotional health. Play also supports self-regulation and develops pro-social skills. Play is a natural, safe way for kids to build relationships and trust, practice empathy, and be physically active. In its simplest form, play is a joyous experience which encourages laughing and smiling. When kids experience those emotions, their bodies produce oxytocin, which mitigates the negative impacts of trauma. So piloting this project ensures all students have access to uninterrupted play during different parts of their day. As part of this project, a team at Taylor Prairie has been collecting some data before implementing the pilot, and the data is observational data as well as some student time on task in collecting anecdotal notes from teachers. And a big emphasis of this project is if you look at the image from an ad leadership article, it considers available instructional time compared to the actual time students are engaging in active learning. So taking a closer look at that, we really want and hope to see a goal of piloting this project is not only there's so many benefits that can come with play, but also when students are in the classroom learning, they're fully engaged on task and really engaged and excited to get their hands on in the learning. So by providing students with additional opportunities to play, we anticipate an increase in pro-social skills, emotional skills, cognitive, and behavioral engagement.
Another part of our vision is providing an inclusive environment, and this is not limited to Taylor Prairie. This is definitely a district-wide goal, that we want all of our students to feel celebrated, seen, and heard within our classrooms. So we work together to make plans for students, for them to be successful right out of the gate. So we work with teams of teachers. There's a lot of people around the table in the room putting their heads together to proactively plan to meet the needs of a range of learners in our classroom. So an example of this that happened recently is that speech and language pathologists created a video that where they were modeling a teaching strategy, and this strategy was not only good, great for students with IEPs, but also just a wonderful strategy for all of our learners. So it's really a time when teachers can come together, learn from one another. They all bring so many talents to the table, so it's a great opportunity for that just-in-time learning, learning together before the plan goes out in front of the students. This is definitely an area that we are still working on, though. We're continuing to reflect on our co-planning process, refine it, make it better, learn through our district ICS professional development days, and then apply that learning to what's happening with our co-planning teams at Taylor Prairie.
So another part of our vision is all stakeholders feel safe, welcomed, valued, connected, and supported. So students and staff at Taylor Prairie have been working very hard to create an environment in which we see ourselves and others. So relationship building has been our top priority to ensure students feel welcomed and connected at school. Students have helped create their environment. For example, in the first picture where it says Room 19, students in my class have helped decorate the walls, so they've had a say in how their classroom environment will look, because that's where they're going to be learning, and this is seen, you know, throughout the school. They've also helped create collages and different pieces of art, displaying different art or displaying different skills that we've been learning. So at the beginning of the school year, students also helped create school expectations for staying safe at Taylor Prairie. And an important part of students and staff feeling safe, valued, and supported at Taylor Prairie is social emotional learning. And our school has put a major emphasis on social emotional learning, and we have focused in on learning the zones of regulation. And the zones of regulation is a framework and curriculum that teaches scaffolded skills to build awareness of feelings and use a variety of tools and strategies for regulation, pro-social skills, self-care, and just overall wellness. The zones provide common language to categorize the different ways that we are feeling, or our states of alertness through four different colors that you can see in those pictures. And we have incorporated ACL in our morning meetings and throughout our day, and focused a lot in our co-planning on how we can meet the needs of all of our young learners. So we've worked really hard on teaching these four zones and what our body might look like and feel like in each zone, and we have seen a lot of growth with our students in recognizing and naming their feelings and which zone that they are in. Another one of the ways we build school and family partnerships and connections so that we feel connected and supported is through the use of the CSAT app. In 4K, the CSAT app is primarily used to connect with families, share learning about what's happening at school, and for learners to get positive feedback from their family. In kindergarten, we see a transition to learner ownership, and that's because of growing technology skills. In kindergarten, we use our Guiding Information Technology Literacy Standards to emphasize creative technology skills. That means our learners are creating and not consuming technology at school. An example of this is the little kindergartner on the right side of your screen. She's learning how to take a good photo with her iPad. It's a really simple foundational skill, but it's one that's going to serve her across the content areas throughout the year as she wants to share more of what's happening at school.
And as Elizabeth said, in 4K, we use CSAT as a parent communication tool. So we share photos and videos related to the learning happening in the classroom. After our experience during virtual learning and now having a device for every student, students are also able to document their learning through CSAT activities. This is then shared immediately with families, and this provides families with a view of the learning occurring in the classroom and provides talking points to discuss their child's school day. CSAT is also used to send families communication about 4K goals and ways to support these goals at home.
Some of the ways we are working to ensure all staff feel safe, welcome, valued, connected, and supported include providing opportunities for staff to experience joy. We know that it's so important for our staff to feel safe and welcome and valued and connected and supported, and when they feel that way, it has a positive impact on student learning as well. So each month, staff are invited to participate in our monthly Taylor Prairie Superstaff Calendar. There's an example on this screen. The Superstaff Calendar provides staff opportunities to value, support, and show gratitude for others by participating in something that we called Cheers for Peers, where we have a bulletin board in our workroom, and staff can write a cheer to acknowledge a peer. And we've also done things like write a positive note, so just leaving a positive note in someone's mailbox. We also provide opportunities for feeling safe, comfortable, and connected on Take It Easy Tuesday, where staff can wear comfy clothes and engage in wellness opportunities after school. You can see a few photos here from some wellness opportunities that were offered at the beginning of the year, and those have continued since then every Tuesday, which are also led by members of our staff. We also work to celebrate and acknowledge other heritages and cultures by learning more, sharing on the announcements, and reflecting and recognizing the contributions of others, and making those connections for our learners and our staff. We've also worked on showing appreciation and support for various staff members on days such as National School Custodian Day and National Food Service Employee Day, where students and staff have made posters, cards, or just greeted those staff members with kind, thankful words throughout the day to show our gratitude.
I think you got to go back to more, right, Allison?
Yes. So another way that you have probably already heard and seen some examples of differences being welcomed but also celebrated, here we're sharing about some of the work that we're doing to make sure that those differences are acknowledged and welcomed and invited into our building at Taylor Prairie. And some of this work has been done through Dr. Goldie Mohammed's book, Cultivating Genius. Some of our staff members did a book study this summer, and we also did some work last year, some professional development, where we began some foundational exploration of her framework. And Dr. Goldie Mohammed says, "Teaching culturally and historically responsive literacy means going deeper than simply cultivating skills. Literacy has to be connected to action." So this includes teachers being intentional when exploring their own identity and who they are, who their students are, and who they are together as a classroom community. In addition to, as I said, the many examples that you have probably already seen, May is going to share a few more examples of how she is embracing this work in her classroom, and others throughout the building are also working on building identity, skills, intellect, criticality, and joy for our learners.
So a few examples of some work on identity that has been done in kindergarten has been a big focus on learning about our names and a big focus on learning how to say others' names and how important that is, and also learning to advocate for ourselves to make sure others are pronouncing our names correctly. So we made a class promise to make sure to ask others to say their name correctly and teach them how to pronounce their name. Another example is celebrating how special we all are and learning about ourselves and others in our classroom and our school. So students created their very own mirror and added, looked at themselves in their mirror and added in all of the special things about themselves, and then they were able to share their identities with their classmates.
Differences are not only welcomed but celebrated. In August, when all the leadership teams met, our team decided that an in-person back-to-school night was not our safest option. When deciding what to do instead, we discussed the goal of back-to-school night. The ultimate goal is to help the child feel at ease and help their families feel ready for a new school year. After thoughtful discussion, we decided the best way to accomplish this goal was to have individual meetings with every family. We saw the benefit of the individual meetings last year and decided it was something we wanted to do again. The meetings allowed us to meet our new students and their families and answer any questions or concerns the family had. The meetings also allowed us to talk with our students and find out more about them, their likes, their interests, what they want to learn about. And that way, we could better plan and help engage them in their learning right away. All staff have stated it was a wonderful experience and helped everyone feel better about the new school year.
Another way we are welcoming and celebrating differences is through our monthly observances. So each month, Taylor Prairie has a monthly observance that highlights a specific cultural group or a topic, and we are creating and sharing school-wide monthly resources for teachers and learners to use throughout the school day. So this example is from September, and it shows the resources we use to center Hispanic and Latinx Heritage Month. We read books by Hispanic and Latinx authors and illustrators. We learned about different cultures and countries, and our learners especially enjoyed learning new words in Spanish.
Yeah, so in addition to the resources that are sent out for the classrooms to use, the theme is also highlighted each morning in the morning announcements. So with our September theme of Hispanic-Latinx Heritage Month, it really tied well with our work with identity as well as equity and inclusion work. So students are able to see themselves and others in the curriculum. And this is important because when students see people who look like them or who have a similar background to them, it's very empowering. And when they see others who may be different than from themselves celebrated, it really expands their view of what they think all people can do and be. So if in September you came to the music classroom, you would have seen students listening and dancing to music created by Hispanic artists. You would have seen them singing in Spanish and celebrating this culture.
All right, and the final piece of our vision that we wanted to highlight tonight is the need for high expectations for all learners. So our goal this year is that 90% of our Taylor Prairie students will achieve mastery on the literacy outs, and those are those essential Common Core state standards. So how will we get there? One thing that we heard loud and clear last spring from staff is that they wanted options for professional development. They didn't want just one pathway, but instead wanted choices. So coordinators worked hard to create some options for them for this year, and coordinators will be facilitating these. One of the pathway options is called Building a Loving-Caring Community. A lot of staff members chose this option, and this pathway is really about building relationships and supporting student behaviors. So the Loving-Caring Community is an option, and then the other option that we have for staff, we titled Equity-Based Instructional Practices, and that's all about leveraging practices that affirm identities and support student agency and application and transfer of learning, and really that ownership of their learning. So we will be offering those pathways during staff meetings this year, and we also know that the co-planning is huge in terms of helping our students rise to high expectations. And again, that's that just-in-time learning, learning from each other, kind of learning through peer coaching before the lesson is actually carried out with the students. So those are some of our ideas moving forward throughout the year, and I want to thank the teachers here. I mean, just listening to this presentation, even though I knew it was coming and I knew it was in it, hearing them actually talk about it really just impressed me so much. They're doing a lot of work in their classrooms to help their students be successful, and I could not be more proud of each and every one of them and the entire Taylor Prairie staff as a whole, and our students too. They're doing a great job. They're amazing. We love having them back in the building face-to-face. So thank you all for listening tonight and having us here. We appreciate the collaboration. Thank you, Emily, and thank you to the staff as well. This was a phenomenal presentation, and I truly appreciate your focus on diversity. I do have a quick question. Are you seeing any great outcomes as a result of this curriculum? Well, I mean, it's still early. I think what we are seeing is students having a good time at school and having fun learning and engaged and happy. They love being together. They love the, they love learning through play. And so, I mean, we can see it in terms of observations right now, in terms of our data. We are just starting to look at that. We had a data meeting today and dug into some of the, you know, iReady data and academic data. So yeah, I don't, I don't have, I mean, it's early, right? We've only been in school 20-plus days. But do teachers, do you have anything to add to that?
I can add something. I think what really speaks volumes is how safe and happy students are when they're at school. And that's one of the biggest goals that we have for the beginning of the school year. Students are walking into a building that for many of them is unfamiliar, seeing staff members that they don't know and don't yet trust. And I know for myself and my classroom and the other 4K classrooms, and as I walk the halls and see kindergartners as well, they're feeling safe, they're happy, and they know that they're loved. And I think when we speak about data, that's the most important data that we can be looking for at the beginning of a school year.
Thank you, Jessica. Right. Are there any other questions from school board members? Elizabeth?
Thanks, Lorraine. Well, great presentation. You had me at the tagline on the front page where it just said, "Where play is the work." I wrote it down. I'm like, that is, that's it. You don't have to say anything else. It's brilliant. And I really appreciate, there are a couple of things I really appreciate around the emphasis around play, and also this emphasis you have around joy, which you stated in your presentation several times, but it wasn't like explicitly on a slide. And this idea of giving folks permission to cultivate joy within the learning context, I think is so huge, and not just at a, at a young age, right? Like, the research is really clear about play and joy in early childhood in terms of cultivating lifelong learning and good academic outcomes. But something I really want to emphasize as we sit and think about this as a district is that it's actually also really good for all people, right? It's good for all kids regardless of their grade level. It's good for all adults to engage in joy and play as they do their, their learning. And I think you all are really a model of how to do that, and think about that, how we can transfer that into other spaces where maybe it doesn't come as obvious or as naturally as it may in the early childhood arenas where the kids will play whether you want them to or not, right? So you might as well construct the environment to be conducive to that. So I thought it was really great. I loved all of the emphasis and intentionality around the DEI work. I love that poster around Say My Name and Say It Correctly. I thought the mirror identity activity was great. And so to me, again, another thing I appreciate is the obvious intentionality and embedded nature of the work, right? It's like, we're not just going to read a book here or read a book there. It's like this really, it's so obviously intentionally thought out and implemented and cultivated and collaborative and supportive. And I just thought, I thought it was great. I think it's amazing. And I just sat there going, well, can I, can I go to kindergarten? Because I sort of want to show up. So if I, if I, if I show up trying to, with a little backpack on, you know, it's because I'm just trying to sneak in to such a great learning environment. So great, great work for you all. And when you said 20 days or 22 days, Emily, I just went, whoa, seriously? Man, you, you all are working incredibly, incredibly hard and have accomplished an incredible amount in a hard year already in such a short amount of time. So amazing. I loved it.
Thank you so much, Elizabeth. I appreciate that. I think it was, is it 28 days, y'all, on announcements? Yeah?
May 9. My kids were very excited because I was 30.
But who's counting, right? But who's counting, right?
Thank you. Hi, Susan.
I just wanted to add, there's not much more you can say after Elizabeth has stated you know, how great your presentation was. The other thing that you can feel from all of you is this collaborative work together, communication, feeling comfortable with each other, which then manifests itself and helps grow that in children. And again, you just exhibited so much of this in the presentation and the work that you do. Thank you.